Yeah.
For the record, this is the Stark County Council meeting on Monday, December nineteenth. We are. We will follow the agenda as published. Starting with the clerk. Luckily Rachel didn't come over and disorganize all your guys.
You all have my. The transfers that I need to have done. The biggest one is in elections. The. Accent P board. Was a little more than we had anticipated. But. Any questions on why I have to?
Why is the service contract so far off?
Um, one of the. Believe it was for the encoders. Including the encoders for both elections. Um, was in a different line and. It wasn't any sort of.
Make a motion, we make a reduction for the clerk. And clerical assistant, amount of six thousand three hundred fifty seven dollars and eighty cents. Move that into absent voter board. Eight fifty two eighty, travel board three hundred and service contract five thousand two hundred five.
I have a motion, Brad Hazelton, is there a second?
I'll stop you.
On a second, okay, is there any further discussion? I'll ask all those in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
And is. Is there any opposed? All in favor, Rachel?
Hey, one other thing that I want to ask you guys is if I can encumber. Um, between my two budgets, between the election and the clerk. Can you give the numbers before I walk over here and the clerk takes? So do I?
Oh, you're okay.
Talk to you that.
We talked, I I meant was Bernadette today as well. And went over on her leads for this and situation with the computers and the age.
Yeah, the age of the computers, um. I have. Two, four. I have six computers that are two thousand and fifteen models. Um. And you are correct, it was on Windows ten, I thought we were older than that.
My apologies. Otherwise, I would have to defer to Mark. I thought eleven was pretty much compatible with ten, because I didn't know that, you and I were talking today. I thought eleven was supposed to be compatible with ten, but is ten, is it ten becoming obsolete too?
Yeah, uh, ten reaches its ultimate end of life, I think, October next year.
And then I also have one, two, three, four computers that are eighteen models, which are also on Windows ten, which is the same scenario that we have. Um, so I want to encumber enough money to purchase new computers, because we put all this money into digitizing the records and working with. Fiddler to get this done, and now I'm having issues connecting with Fiddler to, uh. Not really download the document or scan them, but to encode them, I. Index them. I, uh, we have been having lots of issues connecting to be able to index.
But so. The one thing too, that I wanted to talk to Richard about is even fifteen is pretty new compared to some of the other departments here, is maybe we can move some of those over, especially the eighteen models. But, um, she has the money in her budget.
I have twenty thousand dollars that I haven't used in my election budget.
Which is fine, you can do an encumbrance, but an encumbrance does hit your twenty twenty four county general budget, so they. When you do an encumbrance, that is like a, um. That's like the reduction that they're going to take away from your twenty twenty four budget, so you, I mean, I would suggest using your Q cap, that's what Q cap is for, is capital asset.
When I just buy them now.
Well, that's why I was saying, I I wasn't, I didn't know.
We're done paying out this year.
She can still. No, no. She can still, uh, worry about.
Done paying out this year. Today was the last day of paying any bills in twenty twenty two. You can do an encumbrance in January, it just goes against the twenty twenty four budget. Like when I, when I sit down with the D O.
We hardly use any Q cap, I mean, I think I would feel better about.
It's going to be about eighty five hundred dollars. For new computers and one new laptop for the election persons, and she's going full time now.
You have plenty of money in Q cap, that's what you use that money for.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, we, yeah, that's. I mean, I was almost looking at the. Two commissioners for, you know, that are here for.
Does it matter if we have an exact amount now, or can that exact amount wait till January?
If you're gonna pay for it from Q cap, it can wait.
Doesn't matter.
So. I mean, you can approve for her to get it now, it just to be paid out of Q cap.
You can prove like enough to amount or something.
Commissioners feel comfortable with that?
Right, yeah.
So he's saying like eighty five hundred, nine thousand?
Yes. That's the, uh, surprise that Richard gave me.
You have.
This afternoon. Not a quote, no, just, it's pretty much a guesstimate.
Why don't you wait till? January meeting, when she has a actual quote, and then just buy.
I just need to know if it's okay to continue, is, I guess, is my biggest thing.
I would get.
Because my bookkeeper, we're having problems with Odyssey too, we can't even print checks to the check printer right now out of Odyssey.
Yeah, I wish, I wish we could have gotten it done before this and just finished it for this year, that would have been better, because there was money there this year.
I've been gone for.
No, not that it's your call, it's the offset between the commissioners and the council. A morning meeting for our. Council meeting, maybe we should make, when we reorganize, maybe we should think about making ours on Friday or Sunday, I don't know, some, some other way to make it. You know what I mean? Since we're. I don't, we can spend about that next year, but since we have to approve Q cap. It makes it hard, if somebody or the commissioners wanted something the same day of the meeting before, since we don't have a joint meeting. You know, or maybe you guys might want to think about having a joint meeting again, I don't know. Just throwing that off there.
I was thinking she could go as long as you don't go crazy, you know what I mean?
No.
Not saying that you would.
Now, I had to update our election computer right before election day, because it was. Older than the fifteens, I. Don't remember what, how old it was, but anyway, um, it was right at. Eight hundred and fifty dollars for. Everything I need for the rest of them. Should be close to that same dollar amount, I don't see it increasing.
Oh, wow, that's where I got messed up myself, was when I had this book, Adele was your book, this is probably the current.
Yeah. Lori's, uh, our bookkeeper, her having all the issues she is with Odyssey trying to balance is. What's the biggest push of me doing this, and when we changed bank accounts, that, uh, really came to a head, so that's. I apologize for being at the end of the year.
Ashley.
About Ashley. That includes the laptop, yes.
I'm willing to make a motion, and if you don't like this motion, we can, if nobody can second it, we can do another one. I would, I would like to make a motion to have her proceed with the computers. Um, getting the quotes, and then in our January meeting, we would approve the money out of Q cap for the computers. That way she can do it now. We're not, we're not setting to an amount, you can get the quotes, but we're telling her that we're gonna, we're gonna fund it. That's my motion.
A motion, is there a second, I have some discussion actually.
Also, I can do a motion.
So second from Howard, and and actually, yeah, because their meeting is going to happen, their first one's going to happen two weeks before our, our meeting, our reorganization meeting, so yeah. These commissioners, if they decide to do it, then they've got the approval, if they decide not to, then not. Motion, second.
To you, back to?
No, then you won't have to go back to us, it's already in for you.
You have to have a dollar.
Yeah, a dollar.
A motion, a dollar. But she's spent hell of a bunch more this year. From, did you say?
I said, I said.
You said not to exceed eighty five.
I did say not, did not say not to exceed, but I can, I can amend the motion of not to exceed nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
From Q cap.
I have a motion, and second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye, aye.
And is there any opposed? Some in favor?
Anything else, guys? Thank you.
Thank you.
So you gotta figure it out, let's see.
So.
Until.
But she said she wanted any more money.
Is this, this, this year's. Not, that's why we arranged this.
Well, the upside to you guys not doing this is it's still in Perry's order, and our cash balance and economy, which is a good thing at the end of the year. Or if we decide to put some in the rainy day part this year. Well, I, I can say that, uh, one of the things this is. I've been trying to help the treasurer's office a little bit. They have some things that are historic, that are not necessarily, you know, part of their operation that was carried over. We've made some real headway, getting things straightened out, I was just talking to, uh, Justin and Rachel about one more thing, we're going to be right where state border consequences to be. Um, but there is a lot of problems with the computer. So I think in this case, it looks like she's asking for seventy thousand. It would be who was to. Do something very similar than we did last time for Q cap.
Then how do we want to do this since she did?
Well, if you, you have two choices.
Just leave all this there.
That's either move one, either do that, and you do an encumbrance, or you do Q cap.
Yeah, I, again, I have such a small amount, I mean, it's probably better for Q cap in this case, because it's capital purchase.
I mean, at our last meeting, we instructed her to. Move money around and see if she had extra funds in her, in her budget unexpended for this year. Uh, and then make the transfer and then the purchase.
Right, but now we're too late in the year that we're not paying, that this is too late to be paid out this year, unless you guys want to meet again.
That's the case.
They, they asked her to find money in her budget. So she did that, but we're too late in the year now for it to be paid out this year.
As it claims.
Yes, because the claims were already approved today.
So there's seven thousand forty dollars. There's seven thousand forty dollars in her budget that she's not using this year. Right? That's correct. Will there be a similar amount? At the end of next year?
Because if, well, what we could do is, we already have two amounts that we could move to the rainy day, actually, I mean, we were really going to pay those, like, for sure, those are. Too small, we haven't put anything in the rainy day for a while, those are two we could put there.
We don't have any money to put in the rainy day, but I don't even know what our cash balance is going to be until each year.
Cash balance per opponent, but we just have two things just now that we would have paid.
It, no, it's. No, you're thinking of an appropriation, okay, they are not using their appropriations, their appropriations are different than the cash balance, two totally different things.
But, so we could do these, we could have done both of these, as long as the commissioners have another quick meeting and approval.
Right, looking back, Bernadette's got money. To fund your situation, right? And you've got money to fund your situation, it seems, doesn't seem the appropriate thing to do is go into Q cap when the money's right there, I mean.
Yep, but the, the, the last claims payout was today for the commissioners.
We can't amend that and have the commissioner.
They would have to meet again, but we have to have five business days prior to them meeting, because the claim cannot be paid out unless they're published for five business days prior to their meeting.
Well, it seemed like a matter of about fourteen thousand dollars, maybe they should have a meeting and, and, and take it out of the existing budgets.
Clerk would be okay with that.
And obviously Lori's okay with that, because she did all the work to get it figured out.
No, I, I. They want to meet again.
As of this morning, Charlie did not want to meet again until January second, I mean, we talked about that, right?
I actually specifically asked that.
Yes.
Fourteen thousand dollars might change.
Well, that's my point, there's fourteen thousand dollars that's already in, 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 in these budgets.
Doing any more transfers now.
Yes, what's, yeah. What is our county general cash balance looking like, I know it was thin.
It was, that's why, I'm, that's why I think.
Well, we need to.
It would be better to use your five hundred thousand dollars in Q cap, because this is a capital asset purchase, rather than use your county general that has been low for eight, the past eight years.
And we already set the, I mean, we've got. We'll have the appropriation for.
Yes.
Q cap, we set that in January.
Yes.
As long as no one throws a hizzy fit and zeros out the Q cap again next year, we'll be fine.
That's true.
No, the only time it was ever zeroed out was when we didn't advertise it.
Okay.
We missed the appetizer.
Well, she, she must make a motion that we, uh. Buy. The computers from the treasurer's office in the amount of seven thousand forty. And. Get that from Q cap.
I thought it's six, I thought it's six thousand nine oh two, isn't it, all right?
Yeah.
Well, we're moving, so.
So this doesn't.
No, I only need.
I thought that they were just. So we still need to do.
You don't need to do that.
Transfer.
No. Not at all.
How's she going to pay the dues then?
The dues.
Fifteen dollars and fifty five cents.
That doesn't need your approval, because it's the same series.
Okay, so. Change my motion to six thousand nine hundred and two dollars in services.
A motion, is there a second?
Oh, sure.
Second from Don. If we've had enough discussion, all of them in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Anyone's, I have to do.
That makes sense.
My commissioner, he has a lot less stress than this morning.
So that means the next year, we need to consider cutting all the transfers off, they need to be done. By, by, by December, whatever, before their meeting.
I start asking if, I, I start asking from the departments for their transfer in October.
So that means they really have to be done by November for, for us, it can be no more transfers, because we'd have to. There's, there's no way we could do it.
I had to wait on mine because of the election, I'm sure I paid all my bills before I did anything.
I understand.
I'm so late, I apologize.
Why don't I tell them that?
We don't have that rule yet.
December first. They got till December first.
We've kind of always done that in the past, like, I don't remember this happening. I don't remember this happening, actually. What we're going to do.
I don't know.
You can, you can cover, you can do it that way, it just goes against your budget and.
Yeah, I agree, why rather tape that on one other day? What I'm saying is, I've never seen this happen, where we had to encumber for a long time.
Oh. Right.
Bye, bye, please. I listened to. Commissioner. Did you come up with some things that you thought were ideas? General.
General, but I have a few more.
That my gentleman. We've been, so you must create a mission.
Next time.
All right, I'd like to introduce everybody to Abby Lock Monday, Abby owns the Knox. Ford dealership and a, um, Lock Monday Chevy in Bremen, and that she is in the process of expanding to new expansion, south of Knox. Let her take it over. Okay, thanks for having me. Um, so I, I'm a fourth generation car dealer, I'm, uh, live in Elkhart, I'm two thousand nineteen, I bought this Ford store. Um, here and, uh, been commuting several days a week here to Knox ever since, and, um, looking to, uh, grow and expand our, our operation here in Stark County. Um. So I brought for you guys a little bit information about, um, the auto market here in Stark County, and it's, uh, in this separate presentation here, this is from a cross-sell report, it's just, uh, some registrations that we use in, uh. Sort of to gauge the, uh, the market, if you look at the first page, it says, um, Stark County, this is, uh, new vehicles, new Fords registered in Stark County, January through November. And you can see in the top left-hand corner here that these are, um, where these purchases were made. And so you can see that large, there's a Ford is actually. Actually, the number one market share for new vehicles in Stark County, um, that's on the next page, it's, it's nineteen point one percent. In, uh, Indiana in general, it's about twelve percent, so it's, it's much higher here in Stark County than at other, um, than across Indiana, but you can see that, uh, largely people leave Stark County to buy, um, their Fords. And then on my third page here, you'll see the snapshot of the new car market registrations for Stark County so far this year, um. That Ford is, uh, number two in the market, the twenty-two percent market share for new used vehicles being registered in, um, Stark County, so there is a lot of opportunity here, um. For a Ford business, for a Ford dealership, another, uh, mark of. Um, opportunity that we use is called units in operation, it's, uh, vehicles that are ten years old or newer. Fords registered in, um, the general area, there's about, that's under three thousand of them nearby, so that's a mark for me of understanding how much, uh, potential business or Ford customers I have. That's just Ford, that doesn't include other makes and models, which obviously, uh, my service department is able to service as well. Um, so, eh, I've purchased some, um. So the point of building a new Ford store and moving from this location is to better serve the Stark County residents and make this a destination where people can stay in Stark County to buy and service their vehicles, and also bringing other people, um. Uh, to, to our location, um. To, to buy new and used vehicles and service vehicles. Um, another initiative that we're looking to add is, uh, electric vehicle charging network from Ford Model E program, so that would be adding to, uh. Twenty-four seven accessible, uh, charging stations for the public available at our, um, at our. Is, is part of the things that we're, we want to build and want to grow into, so our current location's just a few blocks away here, um. And our, our future location will be down next to the marina, kind of across from the state lot, um, there was a little square building there, because it was a little old restaurant, so we demolished that, we've got about ten acres there, and we'll be developing that. Into a new dealership, so the planning that we're bought, so, um, Ford. into a new dealership. So the planning that we're bought so um Ford has a minimum planning volume for us that says we need to build a new facility at fifteen thousand or seven hundred square feet. Potentially, I'd like to build a um a facility bigger than that, but it not just not for just for the current business that we're doing, but for the future. I want to build a dealership that's going to be uh the right dealership for the next thirty years to get it right the first time as we grow and as we um add capacity. So um the biggest expansion will come in the service department. So we have a five-day star pattern right now uh in our service department. There's one exit, one entrance. It's uh it's uh probably about the trickiest layout you could have in the service department.
It's small.
It's small. So uh and uh we'd be looking to go from a five-day star pattern to make something of uh at about fifteen days or more um and adding about full ten full-time employees. We have fourteen now. Uh most of those employees would be in the service department in the front department. Um, adding technicians to our our service department. So um a little bit more about the electrical um vehicles. Uh Ford has this vision for their Model E program. Um they require a lot of other, not just our two D C fast chargers that would be customer-facing or public-facing point four seven, but um some other infrastructure that we would need specifically in the service department, special tools, uh battery tables. Um we need to have a forklift and some other things for safety for working on um E V vehicles, which would make uh owning an E V vehicle really convenient for people in Stark County and also any visitors that we have have they have support where they can be charged, where they can um have any service that they need done um um on their new vehicles. So um the next page is just a snapshot of what Ford um uh estimates the cost of adding electrification infrastructure to a dealership um to be fully uh Model E certified, their elite program, which is uh the the number of chargers, uh some other infrastructure that they require. Uh their estimate's about one point two million dollars to become fully electrified. Um now that's to retrofit a uh current dealership. So um some of that cost I could wrap up into um building of my new store, but a lot of a lot of those those D C those D C level three bash chargers are are part of that expense. And the E V is not something Ford requires us to do. It's a hundred percent optional on my self-part to add that as a dealer um to what I offered to the public. I think it's something I'd really like to see us add here in Stark County, not necessarily because E Vs are so happening here right now, but for the future. If we're gonna build a new Ford store, we better be able to serve our customers um for the future for what what our customer base might look like in fifteen years where we have a mix of E V and um internal connections.
I think we can actually talk to Nipco. I think Nipco is the right to go a bit wider.
Sure, yeah.
But I mean, there may be decent incentives.
Yeah.
You know. Of things through Nipco where we can work Nipco as well.
Absolutely. So um I'm here today just because I wanted to let you guys know what our plans are for growing here in Stark County and 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 uh there's some uh ability, if there's any support I could get from the county in adding some of these initiatives to to make this the best possible facility for Stark County. I would really love that support and to share whatever my vision is for
And I did mention because it is within the two mile district of the city, so I will also talk to Jenny about uh any kind of incentives that they could offer. Um, the only thing that if for county why or county goes is potentially um tax abatement. I don't know if that's something that you could do for a dealership with about twenty-four employees. Uh, the state will not um provide incentives because probably because number of jobs isn't doesn't really match their criteria. But um you know, I adding ten people to a twenty or to a fourteen uh employee group is a pretty pretty nice increase in the number of employees. So I told uh Abby that I would try everything I know and uh do research to see what might be out there to help with uh incentives to get her going.
Well, I think the big thing would be you know, since it's a small amount of employees compared to a big factory going in and getting a tax abatement and talking about some pretty hefty personal property taxes here that you're gonna have on those. Um, is that if you would hire the people locally, the big problem is though is that all of our other uh you know, businesses in Stark County are having problems hiring locally, but.
Well, one thing that's great, Dave, is our skill center. Yeah, I mean, Jim's got about what seventy-nine students right now in auto tech?
I mean, I think that would be the big thing, at least for me. I I I'm on this particular thing. I'm not gonna speak for everybody else, but I think they've you know, with them so you know, with many of them so long that that would be our feeling is that if we're hiring all those people locally, that it would make a big difference for us and we would probably want to maximize what we could do for you. You're gonna hire and you know obviously the types of skills that are gonna come with E V. I don't know, skill even teaching.
That happens coming down.
These people are gonna need training anyways, but uh honestly, if you're gonna hire them out of town, we're not I I'm not interested.
Sure.
You know.
No, I'm interested.
That would be the big thing.
Okay.
Why? That sounds exciting.
Yeah, it is exciting. We're um just in the beginning phases of of planning, but um but clearing the land and we'll see a lot of big exciting things happening down there. So. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I just want to roll hotel into that.
And just an FYI, um June and then we're just in the industrial park. The rest of the property has been purchased there by a lumber type of company. I don't know exactly what they hold up to there. But um they have a lot of democracy in the industrial park and they're also
Young lady there probably looking.
And hotel meetings continue. So anybody's See ya.
Make sure we're getting up here compared to hopefully back to Bill. I said twelve oh two today.
That's nineteen and three.
I'll change it. I just put four two and there was one.
Okay, um they just want to last month about bridge thirteen, that's six hundred, you can still go to Robbins Ditch. Um, the council gave me approval. We applied for federal funding. And you gave me the go-ahead, but it was not in record. So I'm coming here to back it up.
Make a motion, please. Uh, go ahead. Go to the grant in the government for a bridge number thirteen.
Which will take four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of CED in in twenty twenty eight.
As long as it's still gonna make the other bridge happen on six hundred, not gonna stop the other bridge.
That's what he's asking for approval, though. It's for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of CED for twenty twenty. Commissioners did, but the council did not. Okay, so is that your motion? What my amended to your motion?
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second. It's a important bridge.
Second from Todd. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, I.
I.
Is there any opposed? I don't know about you down here, but That's nice. Yeah, I I mean, I'll just since
I can't get him outside.
Well, no. Well, but Don's here and I just I didn't. I want to make sure Mark didn't change, but I mean, we're still interested in the project of security. He's coming all the way to eight.
Very.
Yes, there you go. You the two two of the bosses are here.
It may or may not happen before thirteen happens, but Yeah.
Several council people are interested too.
Definitely.
The next thing was setting up a hundred thousand.
Assistant.
You're talking
Does the county have easements all the way through? Six hundred, two eight from personal property owners?
It's county road.
It was. We're gonna have to. We're gonna have to work on it.
Well, I'm asking.
We've looked at it a couple of times. It's a really gray area. Technically, it wasn't abandoned, but by it it's gonna be a fight if we don't just try to work together. The best thing is is that we, when the time comes, we try to work with the landowners. I still have a a petition that I put around the co-op helping with that has about twenty-two hundred signatures on it, supporting it.
I don't remember it ever being abandoned back when I was involved, but.
It was, and Rick did a study on it um years ago when he first got in there and it was gonna cost like eight million dollars back then to do that.
I doubt it.
And and the the most expensive part of that was buying the easements.
But if you can help us, it was still gray.
What's 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 road inventory show?
It shows the road inventory goes down a little bit, but it does not go. The state doesn't have it that we're all the way through, all the way to eight.
Did you guys ever abandon that route? No, what 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 the commissioners allowed them to do was to close that. Yeah. Um, it's like Robbins Ditch. We did not abandon it because we didn't want to want to lose the state funding on the on the roads. Oh, it's shut. Yeah, it's shut. But is it an inventory then or?
No, we are not being paid by Endo.
No?
No.
I'd stick it back on the inventory.
Well, maybe we can all just like really do. I mean, there really is a lot of benefit there for everybody. Um, you know, there's we've talked about the opportunity. I guess kind of this hypothesizing, but
It comes right up.
Continuing trail between that location and the Knox Park.
Right along the
Parking. You know, I've mentioned to the solar companies about push putting a uh agricultural learning center there, but also have conventional farming there as part of it too. But you know, looking for other sources to help us fund site. I mean, you know, there's an opportunity for us there. Helps our trail system. Mark had some other ideas too.
I mean, uh my my support is mostly in having an alternate route from eight eight Knox to Hamlin.
Yeah, that's
Something gnarly happened on thirty-five.
Yeah, and seven hundred is nice and paid, but it's
It doesn't go.
And 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 even then, it's still, there's a lot of muck. It's not as
Seven hundred has two muck.
Yeah. Because granted, if that's eight million dollars, probably half of it's the road. Close to it because it's gonna be all sold. It's gonna be. It's a big bridge there. But the soil stabilization of all that, the road's gonna be a lot too.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably more like ten, twelve minutes. Okay, next item. Um, the commissioner gave approval for purchasing a new um tractor and mower. Uh, we have the money in one one six nine. We love spending.
Yeah, he has money. He has appropriation. You can you can uncover. It's no problem. He has hundred forty-one thousand dollars that you can actually cover. One one six nine is easy. County general's not.
I'll make a motion that we encumber. Thirty-one, that what it is? You have that one too. One oh one, seven fifty, ninety-nine cents.
You got two or three quotes that you get?
Yes. Yeah, I make. Is that we need a motion to cover that one?
Yeah.
I made the motion that we encumber one hundred one thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and ninety-nine cents for the person of the tractor from like
John Deere. John Deere would look at the loads.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All of them favorite, I. Did you try one? Uh I'm just kidding. I like three. I just can't afford it.
Your trans- this transfer.
Oh, yeah.
It's a term of end lay.
I think.
You guys don't have. Oh, okay. We don't have it.
You had cops.
I had.
I got them right here. Are they signed? By Daniel Diaper. Somebody else had to write superintendent. He's gonna get it all spelt.
Make a motion that we make a reduction in truck driver, not twenty-five thousand. Move that to part-time worker, sixty-one hundred. Stone gravel aggregates, fourteen thousand. Road signs, eleven hundred. Service contract, thirty-eight hundred. Also make a reduction in health insurance in the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and move that to gas, oil, and lube in the amount of sixteen dollars, three hundred.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Kay. Is there any further discussion?
It is a Dan, do you just feel that you you're giving up that money for employees because you can't find any employees and you're learning to deal with the employees you got?
Um, well, we had um we kept part-time employees uh through December. Cut and brush back. Um, so normally we shut them off you know, mid-November, early November. So, uh, right now we're four employees short.
Right.
But as of January second, I have four people to start.
Okay.
So we will be fully staffed.
That that's kind of what I was asking. Yeah. Because I know you were short employees and stuff. They're finding you for a while.
Yeah, so we just had a pretty good run really. But we did lose two employees to the state because we start them out uh at our time pay. And then after one month of their time, you get eight hours off. So for every month, we work in a day off. So after twelve months, you got eleven days you couldn't have taken off. That's pretty hard to beat.
Paying you that to us with cops too.
Plus, it only works thirty-seven and a half hours too. You can always take off Saturdays. It's two days.
Is there anything else? Special ones? We have a motion to second. All those in favor? And is there any opposed? Favor, Angel? It's all right. Mary? Just trying to find the funds for the final one.
Make a motion. We make a reduction in the two thousand dollars in ambulance equipment, eight hundred dollars longevity, four hundred dollars in education, two thousand dollars ambulance equipment. Move those into two thousand ambulance supplies, twelve hundred in utilities and two thousand and so forth.
Motion. Is there a second? Second from Don. Is there any discussions?
Is the software that improved billing or?
Yes, um, Ed. Fun pays AppMed for our billing. Our kind of billing company we use. You have a further discussion? All of them favorite, I. Is there any opposed?
I'm just asking you, the perpetration fund for chair, very often coming for I I'm interested uh I don't have a specific one in mind. I'm pretty thorough with my mental. And so I just wanted
Like your style. So if you have any questions or want to make a motion?
Make a motion to improve the ordinance establishing the use of the recorder perpetual fund for twenty twenty-three in the amount of up to fifteen hundred dollars.
Have a motion. Brad, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second. Todd, all of them in favor? Please say aye. And is there any opposed?
I did. You're not paying attention.
You said last meeting that we were gonna
Or not? Uh, skill, we don't need a agenda.
Here to funding for a security system for the technology building. Um, this isn't a security system for theft protection, and we have that already, the security system to protect the students. Um, our front door is not secure. Uh, anybody can walk in the front door anytime they want. Um, I also would put uh locks on the front door with cameras. Um, and also, um. Apparatus so that um our instructors would be able to just get in the building with key fobs. Uh, also I'm seeking um funds for egress doors in the building. We only have two doors, um both facing the south side of the building, if there's a fire or um. Any active shooter or anything like that, I would have. Really hard time getting my students out of the building, so I'm proposing some egress doors. On the east side and north side of the building. I have, uh, I received two quotes for both, if I take the lowest price quotes, um. The total cost would be eighteen thousand fifty-two seventy-six, um my understanding. Um, there are still county funds remaining for skill for twenty-twenty-two of the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and. Uh seventy-four cents, which would leave skill out of pocket, um one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars.
I guess it's, I guess it's skilled money there, it's been a commitment today.
Comes back down to whose billing is it?
That's in building enhancement service and security system.
No, but who's, who owns the building? Does skill own the building or is it county?
The county, well, um, the foundation and skill is from the foundation.
National safety, school safety is very important. Especially right now. Yeah, and the taxpayers of Oregon Davis paid for that, for their school's security. Because they're responsible for the building. And the taxpayer paid for it that way.
Pardon me? Is this common?
Pretty much every school has one.
Okay, so the students would all have a?
No, the, um, what we do in the morning is we have our instructors stand outside the door to allow the students into the school. Um, but then after that, we would have to lock the door, nobody else would be able to come in and out, that's what our plan is. We don't have a way to allow access to buildings.
Students are locked in now, and so that wouldn't change really, the only thing you're worried about is.
Preventing anybody else from coming into the building.
Right now it's locked, though, you're saying, right?
It is, but we, there's no way for anybody on the outside to communicate to anybody in the inside to gain access. So if, uh. Vendors or whatever would come.
Send their phone number, send their phone number, put a sign on the door, call this number to, to obtain egress or ingress.
Well, I imagine we could do that.
I mean, I, I don't know, so, uh.
When that's locked inside, can they push on and get out?
Yes, and that's what these egress doors will allow. One-way entrance or basically a, a. Exit, then alarm would go off, but no entrance from the outside. Yeah.
I don't know how they would ask that with only. Two exits.
So, so these are like real doors, or what size are these egress doors?
Well, they would have to be um big enough for um eight, um. American Disabilities Act, I do have students uh from time to time with disabilities. And I, I do have a student at this time in a wheelchair, so they would have to be, um, they're gonna have the, uh, of the door.
So vermillion, I guess I'm just trying to understand, cause it says lowest price quotes, it has the same one for overhead door. But then it says vermillion's only fifty-three hundred.
Well, the vermillion is the security door itself, and overhead door is the egress doors, two different items.
It's such, can you look at the one above that, cause it was twenty-one, I thought maybe you had. I was just making sure it wasn't the permor instead, when you said the lowest, that's what. It's, it's just my only perspective, you know, like, in terms of, you know, we allotted money for skill, it's there, commission approved it, I mean. I just, you know. We, we just have to rely on you that, you know, you're not, not gonna be sixteen thousand short somewhere else and say, oh, I wish we would, you know. I mean, we're always, we're always wearing the counter at the end of the year of anybody that's gonna say, hey, we know there's eighteen thousand there, we need to find something to spend on. But, you know, we all understand when it comes to that, like, we, we can't get over that, so if you say you need it, I mean. You know.
Well, this money doesn't go over into next year either, so.
Right, so literally, I mean, I, obviously you can see that, you're trying to figure out a way to spend that, it makes sense, I just hope that you're not picking up something else, unless you. You know, had it for someone else, but. Yeah, I get it. Todd's point is, it's just it's easier for us when they're comforting books or equipment, you know, something that's actually gonna teach the kids. His point is, is that we normally don't fund things that are attached to bricks and mortar.
Cause we, we denied, we denied the open, just for that reason.
We don't know, like, we did that before, and they know. Computers, like, whatever it takes to teach the kids, you know, I just, I just, just trying to explain.
Understand, and I may have come for computers, but fortunately, we had Oregon Davis donate twenty laptops to us this year, so.
Well, you're just having to spend it or lose it.
Make a motion, we approved the spending of sixteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, seventy-four cents by skin. Make a motion, we approved the spending of sixteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, seventy-four cents by skin. How much security system and egress thing? How much security system and egress thing?
Yeah, a margin from Brad for the. Yeah, a margin from Brad for the. Sixteen thousand, two ninety-two, seventy-four, um, for the source in the security system, is there a second? Sixteen thousand, two ninety-two, seventy-four, um, for the source in the security system, is there a second? Second from state, is there any further discussion? Second from state, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, at least say aye. All those in favor, at least say aye. Majority still has it, two opposed. Majority still has it, two opposed. Brad has probably a couple of mistakes that got corrected, has anybody else found any issues with salary ordinance or for moved to?
The ones that I found are with us.
But that's all I see, otherwise, uh, nobody else found anything? I make a motion to approve this hour, twenty-twenty-three hour ordinance judgment.
A motion to approve this hour ordinance. Second from Don, is there a discussion?
I need that.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Sorry, opposed? Are you representing automotive at all, or are you just here to hear what we move on?
Yeah, no.
I, I meant, I spoke about this a little bit at the commissioner meeting, I mean, this, we've actually had two meetings together, and you kind of all that. Commissioner and council, we kind of together. You know, asked for the things that are in this, um, ordinance, that's before you. But. We can read it line by line, but I just wanna go back to the one key element of it, is that. What we agreed on with the city back and forth was that we were not gonna pay a premium for anything for city court, it was. It's going to be, um, in essence, the amount that it costs to run the court, minus their reimbursement. And best as we can arrive at that, I mean, things are delayed because of budgets and payouts and things like that. But as best we can do that, and they have no disagreement with that whatsoever. It's still that we would house it in city court, and Kim Hall was instrumental with negotiating that part for us, and he's agreed with it. We've already had some discussions with the sheriff about that, the sheriff elect. Um, uh, it wouldn't be violating the O D L, but um those that want to assemble will everybody know as the date is. There have been a few council that have been involved in it, and then Howard wanted also to, um, uh, be included. So I mentioned it to him as well, that the week of January third, maybe the fourth or the fifth. Um, we like, Angie's on vacation, we like to get Angie involved, Charlie, just everybody can put eyes on it, see what, what it looks like. Jack had already got some ideas as far as security. We're not, we're not gonna be motioning on any business or anything, we can go on a tour together without violating the O D L.
Talk about a majority, um, yeah, there is a carve-out for, to review prospects concerning real estate, I have to look at it.
Cause we did do that back when we were planning the jail, there were times when there were many of us.
It's tied to surveying a site for projects, and this, I'm pretty sure it would qualify, just have to look up.
And it's a site that we all, I mean, you know what I mean, and we're hopefully gonna motion on this tonight, so I mean, it's, it's not gonna change any opinions or anything, you know.
Can we just? Be. Open to all, all board members, all council members and all commissioners that wanna attend this in an attendant.
I'm hoping, we'll have Justin check it first.
I mean, worst case scenario, you just post for it, I mean, it's about all the specials.
Yeah, there you go. We'll, we'll find out, we'll, we'll agree on the date, we'll just do that, we'll just post a date, because we'll decide on, what, what, what days are the fourth and fifth on? Before this Thursday, then this Friday?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday, six, maybe just do a Friday? You have a preference? We'll just set a tentative date, and then we'll just publish it, it's a good idea. That way we don't really have to worry about it, it'll just, uh, joint meeting, commissioners and council, whoever wants to show up. I don't even know who all wants to deal with it, that way it's open to whoever. The whole council or committee will speak openly, joint, we'll just publish it as a joint meeting, absolutely, with you guys.
Would they?
You know what, I brought pizza the last E M A meetings, and then I'm taking most of it home.
Yeah.
And, uh, would you mind sending it now? Maybe Justin'll join us and peace free, but. I just remember, is it divorce?
Yeah.
But I, yeah, cause I, I know Leslie wanted, is Leslie still here? I know Leslie wanted to, or they're, be involved there too, so we should also. Our media staff that are involved in the initial farm, as long as it's okay with the sheriff, I think we might bring them too, if that's okay with you. Uh, everybody's seen it, but I don't know if everybody, we wanna go through it, just so you can, you can see, or we can justify or explain. I mean, starting with number five, that's all general contractual, corporate contractual, so. I don't think you would have any questions about, I should say, four and beyond, but I think maybe you might want to. Let's, let's just do that, if you're okay with that, I'll just talk about some of it, you can correct me, but the term. Essentially, it starts twenty-twenty-four because their budget for next year, and so the term would be from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-seven. Now, what we also talked about when the, uh, commissioners and the council, that gives us four years to plan, what happens next. Um, and so, uh, it will be such a pressure on the city and the county in that case. Um, as far as the purpose is pretty obvious, it's to staff, fund, and operate city court. Um, and so essentially, aside from housing it, we're paying the city, um, for operating that. Um, we talked about this in the last council meeting, and it's been talked about in commissioners' meetings in the past. Um, really, for right now, and we've got Charlie here, if anybody really doesn't believe that I'm saying that, but for our type of offender in Stark County. The way city court operates has been very effective for that, but I'm gonna tell you right now. That, and, and the council knows this, because I've, I've done a lot of research on this, and looked at caseloads, looked at other counties. We don't have enough attorneys to support, even if we could do a different staff court today, we don't have enough attorneys to support that. Um, but again, I don't feel like we have that kind of defender here either. Um. The county's right responsibilities, um, it says that we'll provide the physical location, that's the first thing. Um, it says that we will reimburse them, uh, for the amount, and, and buy any of them because of our draw. Because we get cash two times a year, for them to expect us to give that full amount in the beginning would be too hard. Um, we will provide one commissioner, one council liaison, just to simplify things, that would carry forward, be the ones that would, uh. Communicate with anything that has to do with that. Um, and then the city would obviously make salary adjustments, the one thing that, you know, originally when, um, again. Commissioners and the council had agreed that I would negotiate with Justin about this. And one of the things that we talked about was, is we can't really stop them from giving their people a raise, and so when we generally give a raise. Means, we're, we're, we're kind of at that mercy, we just don't have control over that, so that's there. Um, so that's why it says it about making salary and benefit adjustments.
It does say, just as a proviso in there, that they can't make raise arbitrary, arbitrarily for city court, it's not gonna do the stat numbers. Not that they would do this anyway, but just for both sides, it's gonna give everybody a three percent raise, but we give city court a thirty-three percent raise. So it has to coincide with the other departments, again, not that they would do that, but it was better for everybody that's in there.
And the way we landed there is that's generally been our policy in the county, uh, the county, and so. And the way we landed there is that's generally been our policy in the county, uh, the county, and so, you know, it it makes sense that we would want to be doing it the way we do things. Um. And then the city's writing some responsibility um. Before January first, a list of current functions and operating procedures for city court, just to be fair, where they tell us what they're going to do. Um, any uh adjustments, the reason why we want that by May thirty-first, because in May we start our budget workshops, and so in fairness for the council. Um, it will help us plan for our budget for the next year. Um. They will uh remain employees of the city, so they'll fall under their perp, everything, you know, to do with that, because they're not our employees. Um. And then uh. They're responsible for a payment of all all those employees, then essentially they're elected, essentially anything containing to that then, because of that, they have to pay them. Um, and then, again, that hook that I mentioned earlier, which was one of the things that came up when we were negotiating this with the commissioners. The city shall reimburse the county for all revenue, so, for example. This year, the revenue was about a hundred forty-six thousand, the city was reimbursed twenty-six thousand. Originally, we put in that hundred and eighteen thousand, which is what I mentioned before, but then. Because we're looking at four years and not one, I didn't really feel comfortable with that perspective, but. If you remember, it came to one eighteen because about two thousand was light bill and other, you know, overhead type expenses and so. Uh, but essentially, what it's spelling out here, that would just be that. Um, that it's just that they will reimburse that amount that they get, and so. It goes up, they'll give us more. I mean, and it's it's hard to predict, you know, it's hard to predict how many cases will happen in a year, but I I think. And I think I I when I talk to Leslie about this too, it's probably going to stay surely a while, I don't I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it's really going to go up or down, but. If there were more cases, then it would make more money if they're less, you know, like. But then the state has their own quotient for how much they give the county, how much they give the state. You know, we don't have, we really don't have a show where the state decides to do that. And then for and beyond indemnification, assignment, all those kind of things, like I said, those are all things that are normal in a corporate agreement. But everything, the answer. We presented a motion in somebody's.
Make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the state of Knox and Stark County, Indiana. Of city court.
No, a motion to approve the ordinance regarding city court from Brad, is there a second?
No, second.
Second from Todd, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed? The, what the city would like to do, I just. Maybe I should have asked for in your guys' meeting, Mark, but I I think the city's going to still be a little bit nervous, though, like, they have their last meeting of the year and they were hoping that we could get this through, so they would. You know, be even more comfortable that we, I mean. Now we have them in a position, because if they weren't going to continue with city court, that they would have had to have done that through their council.
Gee, it's just you that said that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know if they wanted to get it.
I mean, it's. Really. Not, not a big deal one way or another, who approves it first, us or the city?
Yeah, yeah, I I don't know that they will, even I just, you know, I know they're a little uneasy about it, but they're gonna. They're gonna move on this.
Well, they're uneasy about it, maybe we just, and you. What are they, what are they uneasy about?
Uh, I I think just that they were hoping that both boards, um.
If they were, if they were going to eliminate court, it would have had to have been passed via ordinance in twenty twenty-two. That's the way these city court judges elected. So they would have had to have, again, by December thirty-first, they had to pass the ordinance if they want to do eliminate city court, so it's kind of a good faith kind of thing. They're saying we're not going to entertain an ordinance to terminate this on the. Supposition that you guys are, you know, going to approve the agreements, that that's their their nervousness, but, I mean, it doesn't seem like, I mean. You guys can't really speak, since you're out of meeting right now, but I'm assuming if you had concerns about this to approve it in twenty twenty-three, you'd probably voice those. Since we have a representative from from the common council here. Perhaps he can relay that in their meeting, that there's really no. Objection from the commissioners, again, you guys. Do what you legally are able to do after January one of twenty-three when you meet, but. It's kind of a good paid kind of thing, I guess, at this point.
Just, yeah, I I don't know, that's, that's the only reason why I brought that up today was, you know. Anybody on the council have any other things?
I thought Sheriff's Department was bringing that name to the stuff up, no?
I think she was going to talk to us about it more, but.
Most of that got pushed in here.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we don't have a million dollars laying around to put on new locks, and, you know, that's the bad. I'd like to talk to the product man, project manager on that, because I think I really feel like they left us hanging on that.
Yeah, big time.
Um, well, I mean, before we adjourn, one of the things, and I haven't talked to Otis, I don't know if you have, Rachel. But, um. The sheriff department does this, and. I kind of just took this as a liberty, and if somebody takes exception to it, I'll pay for it out of my pocket, but. I thought it would be nice if we create. I I don't think we can go back to, you know, nineteen oh one. But um I wanted to see about putting together um black, or it's the highway department that just did it. And it got me thinking. We haven't done that, um, we should, it'd be nice, we had that for the council. And so, um, I didn't look at how many names come up, we, what, we were talking about maybe trying to go back to two thousand possibly. Um, Nan asked me about, I think she's seventy-five names. I need to find out what the highway departments is, but I just thought. You know, while we're here, we have some members that are leaving, some are going to another board. Don's been around the county government for a long time. Um, just wanted to give a round of applause for the uh council people that are leaving the board. And I don't know that we know what that, it's not really expensive, but I just thought that'd be kind of cool, and I guess, depending on how many there's been, I just don't know if it caught my head, but. You know, um. Over the years, it's just been, for me, it's, it's been kind of ominous, you know, I think back about working with Marvin McLaughlin, Freddie Baker, I mean, I could just. Bob Sands without a list, not, and just, you know, God, not, you know, Brad.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, and then all we do, um, I think we're, I'm just saying historically. I mean, you know, I, there's been a lot of people, but I don't know how many.
Are you doing that just for the council day, or you do?
Well, I don't have authority to do it for the commissioners, I don't know, maybe, maybe we could do a joint one, I I don't know.
Recognition.
So I just thought it'd be kind of cool. You know, I mean. More, you know, more for the ones that precede me, then, I mean, there's probably some from a certain date that aren't with us anymore either, and I. Really more interested in honoring those. Anyways, like I said.
It's it's conversation, I mean. We want to do and where we want to stick it.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I address you guys? I forgot something earlier. Um, just to keep everybody updated, um. We were talking to North Judson and to Hamlet about moving their municipal elections to. Uh, even number years instead of municipal election years. And Hamlet has moved theirs, I got their ordinance in the uh mail today with all the signatures on it. So, uh, in next year. They will be having, uh, their board is going to also be split now, so they're going to have, they have a three-person. Town board with one elected clerk treasurer. And two are going to have one-year terms. And two are going to have three-year terms. And then that puts them on the uh even numbered cycle, so we don't have to worry about Hamlet with uh. Municipal elections anymore, so that's a good thing, uh, the town of North Judson has declined. Uh, moving theirs. Um, they are aware that uh they're going to have to pay for their election. Um, they forego the primary. Uh, if they have any opposition in the primary, they go through a town convention. Um, that's. Pretty much on them, even though I will be part of it, so I want to make sure it's run right. Um, but, uh. I just wanted to inform you that we do have one small town go to even number. Uh, years for their elections, so, and their board will be now be split instead of everybody in one year. Uh, two of them on the presidential and two on midterm years. So.
So, everybody's.
Yes. Absolutely.
I don't know if that was a hundred percent evident to me, why did North Hudson want to do it?
Um.
My conversation, I'm going to say, I think they just prefer the current format, um, I don't know if there's other reasons, they just. We we talked about it many times, and I think they talked about changing it, but then they just said, at the last meeting, they told me that they want to keep it in the same format. They're going to abolish their wards and run everybody at large to draw from a greater pool of applicants.
Oh.
Um. With anything, seeing anybody on anything, let alone having a run for a seat at the polls, so. They're going to let their their wards lapse or their districts, whatever they're classified as, but.
Wards.
Think it's like the current format. Then they are aware that they're going to have to pay for it. We've had that discussion.
Right, yeah.
Is there a board of five? And two of them are on a uh midterm cycle, and then. Three board members that are not at large, they're awarded and the clerk treasurer are on municipal. So they will be holding an election for four people.
They don't have to petition that or anything, no, it doesn't take any legislative.
To abolish it, you just don't wrinkle into, you don't uh pass the ordinance, keep them in place, they did that down in Lemac about four years ago.
Oh.
It was by accident, but they like running people at large, because they get a great.
No, they're still at wards.
They still are.
Still a district, it's not.
I thought they switched.
They're, you have to live in the district, but everybody votes on it.
It's always been everybody votes on it.
Small ward switch.
Oh, okay, alright.
Alright. Uh, I get suggestion and a request. Uh, my hearing is not the best, there's a lot of interpersonal conversations going on, and I think some of you. Sometimes forget you're speaking to the back row here, now I don't know if everybody can hear everything, but I can't, and Mandy said she can't hear everything either, so. Uh. I I would ask, possibly consider placing some microphones on the table.
Can you have Richard?
We've, we've had that discussion, and I think it's something now. That we're entering a new year, we'll revisit. As far as how this is. Mic'd up both for the internal speaker system and. Improve the audio on streaming.
Is the internal speaker system running right now, because I'm not really hearing.
I'm not hearing anything, but there's nobody on Zoom, so.
It it only runs and it's on Z. I thought we had.
They don't, the microphones up here don't work on them speaking.
Oh, yeah, they. There's not many speakers back there.
I see two in the cell. I see two of them right there.
We're having a problem.
You can hear it, right?
Yeah, they're just real low, because if you turn them up too high as they are, it gives you a nice bit of feedback. So it's something we got to re, different microphone.
Reevaluate, yeah. Different powerhead.
And then you had a request to say, Marty.
I think it was the microphones.
Yeah, I. Just to get that, okay, comment and request was both about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, that's a.
Alright.
Valid.
Anything else from the audience?